Harrisburg, what's going on in Harrisburg? What have you done in Harrisburg? That's always the favorite question everybody loves to ask. What are you guys doing up there? And you know, it's always a very hard answer. It really is. The biggest thing we do in the legislature is the budget. That is the biggest thing we do. When I first got elected and I went and met with leadership and we talked about all the different issues and everything, I was told again and again and again, the biggest thing you're ever gonna do is the budget. We just finished a budget at the end of June for the third year in a row, on time, no tax increases, I'm proud of that. We have limited spending over the last couple of years, I'm proud of that as well. We did a lot of good things, but there's a lot of things we didn't do as well. I laugh because we're here in Penn Township, and believe, I have a very soft spot here, and Bruce will tell you that. I spent many years in his chair right here as the commissioner. I learned good government here in this room. I learned what good government was here in this room. I learned that working together, whether you're Democrat or Republican, whether you're from the first ward to second ward to the fifth ward here, if you work together, that's the best form of government. That's when government truly is working. What's happening in Harrisburg is not the case. It is just what you imagine it to be, it is just what you hear about in the papers, and it's the same thing that's going on in Washington DC. There's polarization. You're judged more by what letters at the end of your name, and R for Republican, not Dunbar in this case. You're judged by whether you're an R or D, and you're, you know, pushed to vote certain ways. I pride myself on being a pretty independent thinker, and I have been a pretty independent person in Harrisburg. And it's frustrating that we don't get things done. Like I said, here, Penn Township, we got stuff done. We always did. I'd like to see that happen in Harrisburg as well, and we've been working very hard at it. Unfortunately, this year, the big issues that we were facing, we weren't able to get done. First off, transportation. You have heard again and again and again about roads and bridges, more money for roads and bridges. First off, let me say this. We are sixth. The state of Pennsylvania is sixth in spending in miles per road. We spend as much per mile per road than just about every other state in the Union. We also, at the same time, are in the top 10 in tax and gasoline. So we've obviously been collecting money, we've obviously been spending money, but we still need more. What's the problem? Well, people can say it's a topography of Pennsylvania, the hills, the salt on the roads from the snows, those all cause problems, but other states face those challenges as well. So this year, spending $6 billion a year on transportation, it's a lot of money. The governor asked for us to pass a transportation bill with another $2 billion in taxes, and those taxes will be paid by all of us at the gas pump. Twenty-eight and a half cents a gallon on average at the gas pump is what they were asking for an increase. Like I said, I may have an R at the end of my name, and the governor may be Republican, and I appreciate a lot of the work the governor has done, but this is one time I stood up and I said, "No, I'm not voting for it. I refuse." I do not believe, there's something dreadfully wrong when we tax at the highest level in the country, we spend at the highest level in the country, and still the roads and bridges are in bad shape. You really have to question how efficient we've been with the money we've had. What have we been spending all that money on? What have we been doing? So before we tax, an additional tax on everybody at the gas pumps of twenty-eight and a half cents, shouldn't we first look at all the inefficiencies we have and deal with those inefficiencies? That is something I've stressed again and again and again. I was a businessman before I went to the House. I ran businesses. And with businesses, when your profit margin started dropping, when it got smaller and smaller, you just didn't go and raise your prices. You wouldn't have any customers. That's what the governor was asking us to do, is let's just go raise prices until we get more money. Instead of raising prices as a businessman, you look at your processes, your efficiencies. What are we doing wrong here? How can we save money? And that's what I've asked the governor to do, and that's what I've asked to do, and that's why I voted no. I said, "Before I vote for anything that's gonna cost more money at the gas pump, first, why do we have a turnpike commission in PennDOT? Why do we have both? Could one do it better? Could we save money?" It may not be in manpower on the roads, it may not be the workers, but in the top executive levels, there certainly is a lot of money to be saved. I co-sponsored legislation with Representative Oberlander from Killarney County to eliminate the turnpike commission. I really believe that is something we need to do. We also have our state police. They get funded out of transportation. I'm all for the state police. I'm glad we have a new cadet class that's coming through this year. But state police being funded out of transportation just doesn't work for me. It needs to come out of a general fund. That's a bill we have to pay every year. It should be in the general fund, leave the transportation money for roads and bridges like it's supposed to. And lastly, the biggest issue, one of the biggest issues I hear from everybody around here is, if you're gonna have transportation funding, you're gonna increase transportation funding and charge me twenty-eight and a half cents more a gallon, don't be giving it to Allegheny County, Philadelphia County for their mass transit systems. These mass transit systems, some are more efficient than others. SEPTA is relatively efficient organization in Philadelphia, but the Port Authority of Allegheny County is a disaster area, we all know that. Why would I ask all you residents to pay twenty-eight and a half cents a gallon more just to bail them out for their inefficiencies? So before we charge more money at the pump, deal with all the inefficiencies at the Port Authority before they get any more dollars out of the state. Love to hear your comments on that. Secondly, the other issue we had this year that did not get done was liquor privatization. I know there's varying views on liquor privatization within the room. I support privatization of liquor. I don't think the state should be in the liquor business. I don't think you can regulate and sell liquor at the same time. I think it's a conflict of interest. I truly believe that if we sell the state stores, certainly we'll get a one-time bump in revenues, 'cause you'll sell the licenses, you'll have some money coming in, that will help. But also, I think what you'll see is, we have a lot of border bleed. We have a lot of people that go across the state lines into Maryland, into Delaware to buy their alcohol because they can get it there cheaper. Why can they get it there cheaper? My guess is because it's privatized there. The two largest grossing liquor stores in the country are in Delaware, just across the border, and Towson, Maryland, just across the border. Now, you ain't gonna tell me there's a lot of people in Towson, Maryland that drink all that much. They're all coming from Pennsylvania. Well, not only do we lose money through our border bleed, we also lose money because inefficiencies within the state stores and the legacy costs we have there. Hopefully, we can get something done. We passed it out of the House. The House passed it. It sat in the Senate, it did not come out of the Senate. There's still a lot of debate, a lot of issues on how to do it, the best way to do it. One thing I've always defaulted on is convenience, convenience, convenience. Why do other 48 states do it a certain way? Why are we, only us in Utah? How do you end up with Utah anyhow? I mean, out of all the states to be compared to Utah. That's something we need to change, and hopefully we'll get that through at the end of this year. The other issue that we really didn't have much discussion about at the House, but there was bills introduced, was the pension crisis. Pennsylvania is faced with approximately $40 billion deficit in pension, what they owe in pension costs. And understand this, this is not the fault of the workers. This is the fault of the legislator. The legislators in 19, or 2001, I guess it was, was the year, they increased the multiplier of what everybody got. They did that for two reasons. They wanted to pad their own pocket, and that's a God's honest truth. They wanted to pad their own pocket, and they wanted to buy votes. They wanted to buy votes from state workers and teachers, so they increased their pension. Can't blame the state workers and teachers. You can't blame them. But the state, after they changed the funding formula, failed to put the money in. They failed to put the money in, and after they failed to put the money in, you have to understand, when they passed this law, the pension fund was 110% funded. 110%. They had extra money in there. That's as good as you get. Now it's about 67% funded, 'cause right after they did that, then to market tank, and then we go backwards from there on out. So what the governor's asked for is some changes to the pension plan. I do support new hires going into a 401K plan. I do support that. I think a friend of mine, Representative Vankovich, just north of here, always uses the analogy of a boat, that he has a boat that's taking on water, and you just don't sit there and keep bailing out water, 'cause we're behind $40 billion, you just don't keep throwing out water until you plug that hole that's causing all the water to come in. Plug the hole first. Plug the hole first is to put all new hires onto a 401K plan. Then you have to deal with all the other issues that you have as far as not funding it properly. I have not agreed with the governor's plan. The governor's plan is to change current benefits. I think that's unconstitutional. I think in order to change benefits for current employees, you have to do it to the contractual process. You cannot just arbitrarily make a rule. If you go to work every day, like many of you guys go to work, and women go to work, and all of a sudden you came in the next day and your boss told you, "You don't make as much as you did yesterday, you make this much," you're not gonna be happy. I don't think we can do that either. But I think we can do that through the contractual process. That's something we're gonna be talking about in the fall as well. Other couple of issues that you, feel free to talk about. Recently, there was a Supreme Court decision on DOMA, the Defense of Marriage Act. Supreme Court, the federal Supreme Court, ruled that you cannot discriminate against same-sex couples. Pennsylvania has a law. The law in Pennsylvania says marriage is between a man and a woman. I'll stand up and I'll tell you, I believe that. I've been married for 27 years, best thing I ever did, my wife's a wonderful lady, and I hope she's watching. But I believe marriage is between a man and a woman. But at the same time, I don't think you can discriminate against same-sex couples. I don't think same-sex couples can be married, but if you wanna talk about other avenues for them to get benefits or whatnot, I'd be more than willing to listen, and I really, really want to hear your feedback on that. Every town hall I've done, like I said, this is the fifth one I've done, the response I've got has been pretty much all along the same line. I'm really curious where everybody's at on that, because what's happened is this, is we've been sued. State of Pennsylvania's been sued by ACLU that our law is unconstitutional. The Attorney General in turn has decided that, "I don't like that law, I don't wanna defend the lawsuit. I'm not gonna defend that, because I don't believe in it." My response in the letter I sent to the Attorney General was, "That's your job. Whether you like the law or not isn't your prerogative, you have to defend the Commonwealth." It's just the same here. If the township were to get sued, our solicitor would have to defend us, whether he agreed with the law or not. That's your job to do that. So I'm saying the same thing as far as my vote. I know what my belief is, I know what I believe in, but I vote for all you. I vote for everyone in this room, and I'd like to hear what your opinion is on that. Should there be rules allowed for same-sex marriage? Should there be rules allowed that they can be married? Should it be a lesser thing, you know, some other title, some other name, and they can get benefits? I'd love to hear what everybody has to say. I'm 15 minutes in, I said I'd only go 10. Sorry, I get carried away, but I'm sure, I'm sure we'll have other topics come up as we go. Understand, any question is fair game. I don't care, nothing bothers me, so we can start right over here. Sir, just wait for Jennifer to come down, and she'll hand you the microphone.
Are you on?
Is he good?
I have a question about the turnpike. A couple of years ago, the legislator passed a bill, I forget what number it is, but every year, the turnpike has to give PennDOT-
Act 44.
$450 million. Now, I use a turnpike a lot, and I don't think that's fair that I'm paying for everybody who uses roads other than turnpikes. I'd like to see the turnpike money be used for the turnpike.
Yeah, and that was Act 44, and you're 100% right. And what happened, so everybody understands, is years ago, they were trying to find more money for transportation, just like we are now. The governor at that point in time had this wonderful idea of, "Let's toll Interstate 80." That was the idea. That's still being talked about. It's still being talked about. Part of the bill was, "Well, toll Interstate 80, the turnpike commission will be flush with cash, turnpike commission then in turn could give money to PennDOT." Good idea. Vote passed. Governor signed it into law. Well, the federal government came down and said, "You can't do that." But it was still the law. So they couldn't toll it. The federal government said, "You can't toll Interstate 80." But what they were able to do was to, still, they still have the bill out there that says that Act 44 still applies, that they have to pay this amount of money to PennDOT every year. You know, I agree that that should just be eliminated and gone, and I think one way to take care of that, and one way to address that is, for those that are using the road, or those that are putting damages on the road or whatever, or anybody that's buying something that is associated with road travel, that money should be earmarked for transportation. For instance, you go and buy a car. I have to buy a car in the next couple of weeks. My daughter turned 16. She actually got a job, I'm so happy. So she has to get back and forth to work, so she's gonna give mommy's car. So mommy gotta go buy a new car. Mommy goes and buys a new car, was it $20,000, $25,000, whatever it may be, sales tax, $1,200 bucks, goes to the general fund. We can spend that on anything we want to. I think anytime you buy a vehicle, that money should be earmarked for transportation. That way, we can deal with some of those issues there. Now granted, it's gonna create a shortfall in the general fund, but that's all right, because our revenues will continue to increase.
Was the turnpike like $8 billion in debt now because of that law?
Yes, yes it is. Yes it is.
The original intent of the turnpike, I thought, was, once it was paid off, it would be free of having a commission and be given back to the state. Well, that'll never happen now.
That will never happen, no. I would say just implode it. Lisa, do you have an internet question?
Yes, I do. On my phone. Okay, let's see. Per diems. I don't get them. Why should legislators not having to show receipts, that amounts to stealing? Don't any legislators do it right? What are your thoughts on per diems?
Wow, who was that guy?
It just says JP, Jeffrey847.
All right, Jeff, thank you. JP, yeah, I do it right. I don't take per diems, so that's an easy question. For those of you that don't understand, anybody who lives outside of 50 miles outside of Harrisburg can collect $162 or $180 a day, whatever the number is, any day we're in Harrisburg. You don't have to turn in receipts, you don't have to do anything. The number I saw recently was $30,000 a year, I think we're the leading-
Thirty-five, I thought it was.
$35,000 a year was the leading number for how much some legislators collected in one year on per diems. That's in addition to our salary. I don't take per diems. I understand the accounting reasons why per diems work. I'm a CPA, and it's a lot of paperwork if people are turning in all receipts. But when you're dealing with taxpayer dollars, I think you should be accountable for everything you spend. Turn in a receipt for everything you do. For me, I go to Harrisburg, I stay overnight at the Radisson Hotel, it's $62 a night, I have a, you know, it's a nice hotel, it's not as bad as it sounds, but I turn in my receipt, I pay for it, I turn in my receipt, I get reimbursed. I've never not, I've never not taken a, I've never taken a per diem in any way, shape, or form. Included in that per diem is a amount for meals, like $52 a day, and I gotta be honest with you, if you're in Harrisburg and you're hungry, and you can't find somebody to take you out to dinner, you're a pretty bad legislator. I just gotta be honest, people will take you out to dinner, if that's what you're looking for. So I never turn in a per diem for meals either. Along those lines, just because I do it, doesn't mean everybody else isn't doing it. The number's pretty staggering how much goes out in per diems. I've co-sponsored legislation on per diems that limits the amount of days you can take them, you can only take them on session days, 'cause there's members that are taking them like this, I mean, we're not in Harrisburg this week. I was in Harrisburg last Friday, I went up there to see a Boy Scout troop. That's the only reason I was in Harrisburg. But since, since the beginning of July, I haven't been in Harrisburg, but there's members still collecting per diems. They go up for committee meeting, they sign in, they take the day before, the day after. I've co-sponsored legislation to eliminate taking per diems unless you're there for legislative reasons, or for a committee meeting that you're serving on. 'Cause what happens if, let's say, one of my committee's finance committee is meeting, and they're having a meeting, and I go up to Harrisburg for a finance committee meeting. If you're a member of the legislature, whether you're on finance committee or not, you walk into the finance committee meeting, you sign a roster that you were there, bing, 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 per diem. So it certainly needs reform. Not to elaborate too long, because I know there's other questions, but there is a new caucus in Harrisburg, it's called the Reform Caucus. There's a caucus for everything in Harrisburg, trust me, there's a caucus for every disease, everything there is. I'm very selective of what caucuses I join, because I really only wanna join these caucuses if we're gonna do something. Now, for years, everybody talks about going to Harrisburg and changing the way it is there, and nothing ever changes. It's pretty frustrating. It's frustrating for me, I've only been there three years, it's frustrating that we haven't changed these rules already. I joined a reform caucus for one particular reason. It's chaired by Senator Rob Teplis from Harrisburg, a Democrat, and Representative Brian Cutler from Lancaster, a Republican. It's sponsored by, it's chaired by a member of the House, a member of the Senate, a member of the Democrats, a member of the Republicans. This is about what I said earlier, about working together to try and find solutions. So we've had a couple of meetings, the first thing on our agenda is addressing COLAs. Every year, we get a cost of living allowance increase. I mean, you just get a raise every year, it's pretty nice. But the COLA bill we're proposing is that you don't get it every year, and it's only if Social Security gets an increase, would it even be considered for legislators as well? Why should we get something where our seniors aren't getting? So we're working on COLAs, after that, we're gonna do per diems, we're also gonna work on campaign finance reform. So JP, thanks for an easy question. Question here? Go ahead. Wait for the microphone, buddy.
On the liquor privatization, I personally went to the beer distributor over here on Penny Lane, the one down in Level Green, and the one by the S&amp;T Bank. I talked to two owners, one manager. All of them said, "You pass the privatization, they're out of business." I realize that those are only small businesses, but the guy who was in the paper recently admitted he has spent $120,000 on lobbying so that he can get his super liquor stores in. Now, you know, why do we wanna put small businesses out of business? I thought that was the big, the big deal, that we're gonna, you know, do this. Now, I was just in Ohio. I went to buy a bottle of beer for my wife and I to have for the evening. They had 12 different kinds of beers you could buy. That's it. You know, so, you know, this idea that we're gonna have 400 kinds in the, in the stores, it's a myth.
Yeah, okay. First off, Ed, I appreciate what you're saying about small business. I'm proud of the fact that I am recognized as the leading legislator of representing small business in Pennsylvania. I'm recognized as a guardian of small business, one of 12 legislators in the state that are recognized as such. I come from small business, I believe in small business, it's a backbone of our economy. I truly understand that. I also talked to all the beer distributors. They've been in my office, they'll tell you, I have met with all of them. Different legislative, different legislative things that have been brought up would seriously jeopardize the future of some beer distributors. It would, some of the bills that have been proposed. The bill that passed out of the House would not. The bill that passed out of the House would put them in competition with local convenience stores on some aspects, and local grocery stores. But it also gave them the opportunity of having first call on the liquor license. They were gonna be, they were gonna get able to, they were gonna be able to bid on the liquor licenses by themselves at a fixed price. They weren't even gonna have to have a competitive bid with the big guy that you mentioned that has, you know, 1,200 stores or whatever. I assume you're talking about Total Wines and Spirits, that he has lobbyists that he paid $120,000 to?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's Total Wine. The beer distributors would be able to buy the licenses before even someone like Total Wines could even come in and look at it. So they're getting a free run at the licenses. And I'll tell you the truth, if I was a beer distributor, I looked at it, my license has increased dramatically in value. The license that I had bought and paid for, which is my retirement plan essentially, if I was a beer distributor, all of a sudden has gone up exponentially in value, because I'm one of the few that can buy a liquor store now. Granted, there would be some costs. I'm not gonna deny that. There would be an investment they would have to make, but it wouldn't put them out of business, the bill we passed.
All three of them, they, all three of them said very simply, they, even if you give them three easy installments of $50,000 each to buy the license, they can't afford it.
See, and you're working on an old piece of legislation, you're working on Mike Terzis' bill, HB 11, from last session. This session's bill, the number was significantly lower on the license fee, significantly lower. So I think it was, I can't remember the exact number, but it's in the 30s or 40,000 dollar range? It was 30, 40,000, I don't wanna, yeah. So I mean, it was, it was a lot more palatable number, trust me, Ed. We'll get you the exact numbers on that.
No, that's all right, and I just wanna correct one thing. When you were saying the teachers wanted to buy votes-
I didn't say the teachers wanted to buy votes. I said the legislators wanted to buy votes.
The legislators wanted to buy votes, and they gave it to the state employees. I was on the PSCA legislative committee for six years. Never in that six years did they ask for a raise in the pension, never.
I know that. I didn't say they did, Ed. I said the legislators wanted to buy votes. How do you buy votes? You give stuff to people, you don't even wait for them to ask.
Yeah, they, again, it was-
I didn't, I did not, you, you misinterpret what I said there, Ed.
No, no, no.
Yes.
This does not give a dollar figure, but it says that the beer distributors would've had 48 months to pay. And our next question comes from John of Jeanette. What is your stance in general on House Bill 357? How far along is it, and what chance does it have to pass?
HB 357 is a Second Amendment bill, and it's a little scary that I, the only reason I can remember all the House bill numbers is that one is a descript number, 357, dealing with the 357 Magnum. HB 357 is Representative Metcalf's bill, which I am a co-sponsor of and I do support. HB 357 essentially says that the state of, the laws of the state of Pennsylvania would not be trumped by federal laws. Essentially, that is what it is in a nutshell. I've talked to Representative Metcalf about the legislation. He is hopeful that it will be passed out of the Judiciary Committee this year, but there is no guarantee of that at all. After the Castle Doctrine was passed last year, the leadership wanted to lay back a little bit on some of the gun laws. So I mean, am I hopeful that it can pass? Yes, I'm hopeful. Is it likely? I'm not sure. A question here? Yes, ma'am. Hold on one just a sec, so she can get the microphone, so everybody can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Rosemary Guybel, and I live on 1006 Trailside Court. I, along with others, are concerned about the safety problem and sight distance situation we have in our area. I spent some time with Chief Otto today reviewing the area. We both agree that there is a safety problem and sightline problem on the Trailside Court Road, which I have a diagram of here. I'm also concerned that Pennsylvania is the only state that does not allow its municipalities to enforce practicing safety with radar. That just blew my mind, because-
I didn't know it was the only state, but is there, first off, I am not real familiar with-
This area.
Yeah, the area.
Well, that's okay, because I'm coming to the commissioner's meeting tomorrow about this. Representative Shula has asked me to-
Commissioner Shula, yeah.
Commissioner Shula.
Yeah, and to answer the question, the question was, Pennsylvania does not allow radar for local, for local police.
Yes.
No, they do not. There is legislation right now proposed to do that. There is legislation proposed to do that. And to be honest with you, I've been kind of up in the air. For every, everything you have, there's always an upside and downside, you gotta balance everything off. On local roads, on a local road situation like that, 25 mile an hour, is that right, John? I'm asking the chief. 25 mile an hour. If you had radar, you couldn't stop till they were at 36, 35, 36?
31 with radar.
31 with radar? What is it with-
With radar, 36.
36 with the strips?
With the Accutrac.
With the Accutrac, 36 with the Accutrac. The public safety always has to be an issue. I, I live in a small housing plan right over here and I was telling Bruce earlier, it is amazing to me. I could drive along Berlin Road and I don't know if anybody knows where Berlin Road is. I could drive along Berlin Road and it's 20 miles an hour. It's, it's slow. I turn into my housing plan, which is four dead end streets, and it's 25 miles an hour, which makes no sense whatsoever to me. But that's the way the laws are written right now. It, it's insane that, and in order to get, the lowest you could be is 20 miles an hour. And in order to get to 20 miles an hour, you have to go through a series of studies and, but I will say this much. The local radar, that my concerns, I will tell you my concerns. My concerns are this. I wouldn't worry about local radar or allowing Chief Otto and his men to have local radar here. Because I know Chief Otto and I know the type of, type of police force he runs here. I know they won't be out there abusing it.
Well, I'm...
Or using it, or using it solely to generate revenues for the township.
No, that would not happen, I'm sure.
Yeah, I, I know that. I know that would be the case here. I don't, but the argument is some other municipalities may use the radar solely just to feed their pockets. And it's a scary proposition. It's much alike red light cameras.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, has anybody, everybody heard about red light cameras? Red light cameras are supposed to be a safety tool that, you know, where they're going to tag you just by driving through. And they have them on Roosevelt Boulevard in Philadelphia. And the first time I drove down that street, I almost killed myself because of red light cameras. Because I'm driving along and the light turns, you know, green and then green-yellow and you figure you're going to go through it and a car in front of you and the car in front of you slams on its brakes. And, and you, and I slam on my brakes, almost hit him because I thought, "What are you stopping for? It was green-yellow. You still have..." They knew the red light camera was there. I did not know the red light camera was there. So this is, they're put in to help safety, but sometimes can create, create problems as well. And the red light cameras in Philadelphia generate millions, millions of dollars. And they were solely put in to generate money, no matter what anybody says. I don't mind local police having radar, but I need to have, I do have grave concerns about how it will be utilized in a lot of areas. As far as your specific problem, first off, have you spoken to, you're in the first ward, right?
Yes, Representative, or...
Commissioner Shula.
Commissioner Shula, I'm sorry.
And in all honesty, I don't even represent that board, that, that part of the town.
Okay.
I represent, but I, I mean, I'll be glad to help you with any, any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much.
But if you, after you speak to, with Commissioner Shula, stop by my office. Stop by my office. We'll talk about it. I'll, I'll talk to the chief as well. We have gone through different places here in Penn Township where we've done different things where sometimes it's just a police presence. Sometimes a police presence is enough to slow down traffic. Sometimes it's other signage. Sometimes it's signage, and, and the township has been very good. Commissioner Horvath's here as well. But I mean, the township has always been very good in supplying signage of, you know, kids at play, you know, different things like that to make people aware. But I think the biggest thing is if they, if they know a police presence is there, they're, they're going to slow down. Secondly, it's very difficult, when I'm looking at your drawing here, and, and like I said, I'm not familiar with the roads, but with bends and things like that, it's very difficult to have stop signs. Is that even possible, John?
I've looked at Rosemary's situation today with her and of the three locations that she's requesting a stop sign, you know, I would, I would support two of them.
Okay.
Two out of the three. The one is clearly an issue where it at least appears as though the stop sign is designed to slow traffic. But I would absolutely go on record with Rosemary supporting two of the three locations. Whether or not, you know, my opinion...
It counts, John.
You know, not necessarily counts, but understands the legal ramifications necessary for a stop sign is another issue.
Yeah.
But there are definitely some sight distance and some safety issues at, at least two of the three intersections that Rosemary is considering this.
Because I, I know we just, we put a stop sign up on Martha, just not that long ago. So I appreciate your comment. I appreciate the question. Please, see Commissioner Shula.
Yes.
Let me know anything I could help with. I'll be glad to help, anything I can. I put a lot of, I, I am a big, big proponent of, of local control. I really firmly believe that, like I said, I learned all my lessons right here in this room. I really believe that Commissioner Horvath and Commissioner Shula and Sullivan and Harrison and Worthing, all really good men and they'll be more than willing to sit down and listen to your problems.
Thank you.
And if you have any other questions, feel free to stop by my office.
I wanted to thank Chief Otto. They're slowing down there now. We have a machine there today and you'd be surprised how slow everybody goes when they're coming.
You talking about that little sign that said your speed is?
Yes.
That certainly helps a lot.
You'd be surprised. Everybody's breaking it now, which is nice. Thank you very much.
That's nice meeting you.
Yes, my name is John Fort. I've lived in Penn Township for 35 years. I've lived in Pennsylvania all my life. I have three great-great uncles inscribed on the Pennsylvania Monument in Gettysburg. And I'm here to, today to talk about the death tax here in Pennsylvania.
Great.
I see that you've done a little work on it.
Yes.
You've done the mom and pop shops.
We've done the mom and pop shops and last session we did the farms.
But, you know, we need to do more than that. And everybody in this, and I see in this, in this meeting here, we have a lot of people that are in this bracket. And when your family dies, you will get the biggest surprise of your life. And in my case, I'm looking at a $50,000 to $100,000 bill.
Yeah.
And I just went through over $10,000 worth of funeral expenses for my father, $10,000 plus for my mother. And I cannot get any legislator to do anything about this. And the governor seems to be sitting on his hands. He does nothing. He thinks everybody's going to do everything for him. It's not the way it works. He has to show some leadership and he has none. And I'm ashamed that he's a Republican, because I am too.
Yeah. I, I really understand your frustration. We have Representative Bloom, who's, I don't know where Steve is from. Steve has worked really hard on inheritance tax issues. Like I said, we did the farms. We did the mom and pop. We've introduced legislation to eliminate it completely. It is the most hard-to-believe tax that you're dealing with a loss, a family loss, and then told that you have to pay over, you have to pay just because they died. You're paying because someone died. It's the most ridiculous thing I've heard of in my life. The amount of money Pennsylvania gets from the inheritance tax is not that big of a number that we can't overcome it, to tell you the truth. I've co-sponsored a bill. I've argued for it in Finance Committee. I'm certainly hopeful that we can get it, get it through. I know they've given us, they've fed us little bones. Watch yourself there. They've fed us little bones where last year we got the, the farms, this year we got the mom and pop. And those are good steps. They really are, because, you know, you don't want to lose a family farm because of inheritance tax. You don't want to lose a family business because of inheritance tax. But you also don't want to lose, you know, what you've worked your whole life for just because someone died. It, it, it is just an onerous unfair tax. Believe me, I've been a strong advocate for it. You, you always have to get, the, the rule always is 102, 26, and 1. You need 102 legislators to vote for, you need 26 senators and you need a governor to sign it. But I think we have the votes for it. We'll certainly keep pushing for that.
I see no accounting for the death tax. Where does that money go?
It goes into the general fund.
And where does it go? After it goes into the general fund?
It can go anywhere. It can go anywhere. You know, it can go to education, it can go to welfare, it can go to transportation. It can go anywhere. And that's, you know, there is no, you know, there's no set earmark for it once it's collected. It's not set, you know, like this has to go for seniors or anything like that. It, that's not the case.
Well, I want to see you try to do as much as you can.
I will.
You know...
It, it is a big issue that we, it is an issue we talk about quite a bit, to tell you the, but a lot of times we talk about things and nothing gets done and it's very frustrating. But at least on these lines, because I went in there on the agenda of eliminating capital, stock and franchise tax for businesses, eliminating inheritance tax for individuals. These are things, but in order to do that, you have to stop spending at the levels we're spending at, or at least cap spending. Because as long as you, as long as we keep spending and spending and spending, we're going to have a thirst for revenues. And those revenues have to come from somewhere. And right now, they're using it through the capital, stock and franchise tax on business and the inheritance tax on individuals, which is just, it's, it's a crazy tax. And I understand, my, my father's 83 years old and I mean, I, I would love to have this taken care of before he passes. I, I know it probably won't be, but I'm certainly working towards it. I appreciate what you're going through. I really do and empathize.
And I think, you know, another thing while we're talking on this, I think everybody in Pennsylvania needs to know what investments are taxable and what aren't taxable in the Pennsylvania death tax scenario.
Mm-hmm.
It's an education. I think the state of Pennsylvania should send this out to people. And maybe we'll all not have to pay these taxes if we know which ones we won't have to pay.
Do you have that at the office, Lisa?
I think I do. I, I'm not sure if it was you I talked to. I talked to someone recently about this and the Greensburg Department of Revenue, it's the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue, the Greensburg office, said that they had information on it. I can get that to you if that wasn't you I talked to.
Well, I know, but everybody in this other room here does not know which ones are exempt and which ones you're going to have to pay.
We could put it on the website.
Yeah.
That I get from revenue.
Believe me, if you have a mutual fund, if you have money in the bank, you have anything like that.
It's all taxable.
It's all taxable.
It's all taxable.
The only thing that you can get away with is life insurance. Buy life insurance. They can't tax that.
Yeah. And that's why, that's why, as, as a CPA, when I was a CPA, when I was working as a public accountant and we do estate planning, the biggest thing we would always do is sell life insurance, sell life insurance. So now CPA's actually go and sell life insurance. So they just found it's another vehicle to make money for themselves as well. But it's good estate planning is to buy insurance as opposed to having idle money. Said idle money would be taxed, life insurance proceeds are not. Lisa, did you, I'm sorry. Did Lisa, did you have another question?
This question comes from Dana of Irwin. Thank you for your work on the Turnpike Bridge. The traffic is just as bad at Route 130 and Harrison City Export Road. Can you fix that too?
Yeah, if you go out there right now, you may not believe that. But yeah, first off, I, I will say this, when I, when I first got to the House, I had agendas. I had things I wanted to get done back home. I look at it as our job is three different, three-legged stool. The one leg of the stool being the legislative initiatives that you're pushing for, changing laws like we talked about on inheritance tax. That's one leg of the stool. Other leg of the stool would be constituent service, something like this, coming out and talking to, talking to constituents or what Lisa and everybody does at the office, taking care of the constituents when they have problems, state-related problems. The third leg of the stool always was, what are you going to bring back home? What are you going to do for back home? What issues need taking care of back home? When I went to Harrisburg, the biggest issue, the biggest thing on my list was the Turnpike Bridge. And I know Bruce and Chuck, Chuck who served with me here and Bruce is the manager here will tell you, for years we sat up here saying, "Oh, we got to get this done. We got to get this done. It's on the schedule. It's off the schedule. It's going to get done. It's not going to get done." When I got to Harrisburg first, one of the first things I did was talk to the governor's office, talk to the Turnpike Commission, talk to PennDOT. And I think we all came down here and locked everybody in the room down here until we had an agreement on how to get it done. And anybody who lives down towards Level Green and has to come up through there now, will tell you, it's a heck of an improvement. It's a heck of an improvement. I'm very proud of that bridge. It's, that's something we did at a very low cost. It got done very quickly, efficiently, and it's paid evidence for the township. The other side of the township, as far as Penn Township is concerned, is Harrison City Export Road. And I thank the county for stepping up and getting involved with me. We got the county and PennDOT involved to do a project that's been sitting around for, I don't, I don't know how many years, but long before I became a commissioner here, it was, it was, it was proposed. Harrison City Export Road is going to be widened. There'll be a turning lane as you're coming down towards 130. So when you're coming down towards 130, you could turn left or turn right. You'll each have your own lane. We're going to try and straighten out those S bends the best we can and this is all about public safety. This is all about public safety. My kid goes to school on a school bus right up that road every day. It's important to me. My daughter, my 16-year-old daughter, I told you, just turned 16, took her driving. I went through there with her eye on my eyes covered. She's, I'll tell you what, going through them S bends is scary stuff with, with a 16-year-old girl driving you. So we're going to try and straighten those out. It will help traffic flows. It will also hopefully facilitate economic development up 130 further in the shopping center area. So we're hopeful that, that's another project that's not going to be very costly. I do have to commend the county commissioners for getting on board and helping us get that to, get it to the point it is. Right now, they're demoing buildings along 130. There, I think there's two buildings are demoing right now. And they're also relocating utility lines from one side of the road to the other side of the road. Is that pretty accurate where we're at right now? Throughout this year, they'll continue the relocation and the demolition. They're going to have to replace that little bridge just past the gas station. Expected completion is next year. Do you know the month, Bruce? September of next year. So that's a project in Penn Township that's important. There's also projects in North Huntington and Jeanette that we've been working on as well. It's not limited to Penn Township, but that's the one that's going on now. Yes, sir?
I've got a question about the, the commissioner's corruption on, from the Turnpike.
Yes, sir.
What's going on with that? Has anybody gone to jail? Have we recovered any money back from that?
No, they have not recovered money. They started having hearings, they started having court proceedings about two weeks ago, where they called in, at that point in time was Joe Brimeyer, who, did Joe actually live in Penn Township at one point in time? He ever, I always thought he... Brimeyer, I don't know.
I've heard of that. It was Clinks.
Ron Clinks, yeah. But their hearings are going on. There is, they have not been decided yet. The amount of money we're talking about, nobody really knows to even know how you would, if you can recoup it, I would hope we could. But that's just another reason to implode the damn thing to begin with, to tell you the truth. If people up at top on the level of command are taking money in order to serve up projects, and it's essentially what they did is, and it didn't matter if they were Democrat or Republican, everybody did it. Both sides of the aisle were guilty. This is not a Democrat-Republican thing. This is just a corrupt organization of people taking money and awarding projects based upon campaign contributions. It's, and...
And that's the cost, that's the cost of bridges.
And that's the cost of bridges, because guess what? If you give me some money from my campaign, I'm going to give your construction company this job. You're not going to worry about what the cost is. And guess who's paying for that? Everybody else in the room is paying for that, because the cost of your contracts are going to be woefully inflated.
Yes, people need to go to jail.
They do. And you know, the ironic thing, I told you last week, last Friday, I was up at the Capitol with the Boy Scouts and we're walking through the hallway, we're walking through the hallway where the House Majority Leader and Speaker of the House Office is. And down in this hallway is the Speaker portrait. You know, the, the big pictures on the wall of all the speakers of the House. And so, you know what? I'm trying to educate the Boy Scouts. I'm trying to educate the kids. I come down and said, "Anybody know who that is?" They all looked and said, "Ben Franklin." I said, "Right, Ben Franklin. Good job." They all knew who Ben Franklin was. I get down to the next, next portrait, I pull up, "Anybody know who that is?" The kid said, "He's probably in jail." And I looked at how crappy he is. It was a Boy Scout. So, and actually, believe it or not, you know, when you say that these people, these individuals at the Turnpike Commission should go to jail, they most certainly should. But not only that, for the speakers that are in jail, and there's a couple of them, their portraits need to come down too, so I don't get embarrassed like that again. But I would hope that we hold everybody accountable for that. When I was talking earlier about the Reform Caucus, that's one of the big issues we want to deal with is campaign finance reform. Limits of how much money anybody can get. Because you know, it, it's really a sad situation when it, the best candidate don't win, when the candidate with the most money wins, and the most candidate, that candidate may be being bought by somebody, whomever, whatever side, you know? It, it's a scary situation. That's why we have poor government.
On the reform, the two or seven, what I wanted to ask about, uh, is the intention to put caps on how, how much each campaign can spend?
Not, not caps on each campaign can spend, but how much a contribu-, how much of a contribution you can take from one individual.
Okay, but the trouble with that is that they, you know, still could get, one side could get a whole bunch more money.
It's still possible, yes.
Whereas if you had a cap on, you know, anybody running for this office that they couldn't spend more than, from whoever they get it from, but at least had a ceiling, it would be fairer.
My only concern, and, and I agree with that, and I mean, coming from a race where I got outspent two to one also, but, uh, my only concern with that is, if someone, if we limit how much every individual can get off, off of one person, and let's say...
Well, it's a stepping stone, I'm sure.
But let's say we limit that much, but, and you're limiting your total spending, but I collected a lot more than that, then I'm sitting on a bankroll for years. And that I could use to influence other races, I don't know if that's fair either.
Well, maybe there's some way of...
Yeah, limiting the whole thing, but I...
Yeah, because I, I mean, I strongly have felt that way for a long time, for every elected office.
I agree with you.
You know, because it's, I mean, there's so many, first of all, and in many elected positions where people have to run so often, I mean, they hardly have time to do the people's business because of all the fundraising they have to do.
I'm not going to argue with you, believe me. I lived that life, and it doesn't make me happy, living that life, to tell you the truth. And I also, you know, it, it's kind of funny, like, right now, it's quiet this year. This year is a very quiet year, not a whole lot of commercials on TV outside of UPMC Highmark, which is something else we can discuss. But there's not a whole lot on TV, but next year, this time, you're going to be beat up, and you're going to be beat up with, you know, governors, senators, my race, Senator, whoever else is running. And it's, and it's just such, and you sit there and you shake your head, it's like, oh my God, it's such a waste of money.
Well, I, I'm old enough to remember, because I've always voted, it was a family tradition, you have to have responsibility, not just privilege. But, I, I mean, the whole campaign thing has just gotten so atrocious compared to...
Oh, I love you.
...fifty years ago.
Believe me, I, I agree with you.
In so many ways.
And, you know, you, people get into politics for a lot of different reasons. People get involved for a lot of different reasons. I always believe that everybody always gets in for the right reason. They always get in for the right reason of wanting to do something good, wanting to change things, wanting to make things for the better. That's why I got in. I, I mean, I'm, I was 52 when I first got elected to the House. I'm not a young man, I'm, I'm not making a career of this, my career, I've already had my career. You know? This is something about, you know, doing something positive to have some type of legacy, to, you know? And every year, or every two years, when it's election time, my wife looks at me and says, you really want to do this again? I mean, it's, it's really hard. I mean, it's, it's really...
Well, I mean, the influence of money in politics is just, I mean, on all levels.
And, and I...
And it means it's like overpowering to the citizens. I mean, do our voices really count anymore?
It, it's really hard, because, you know, that's, that's a very good point. I, you know, you hear about lobbyists, everybody's heard the word lobbyists. They are what you think they are, they are, they are, I mean, they are really, they're doing their jobs. They are doing their jobs, they're going to Harrisburg, same as they are in Washington DC. They're going and they're talking to legislators, and they are trying to push forward their agenda, whatever their agenda may be. And they will, you know, they will talk to you, they'll meet in your office. But they'll also, you know, they're, they're willing to throw campaign contributions out there too, if you want to be that type of person as well. And it's very hard. It's very hard, because you need money to run races. But I look at it this way, they're not voting for me. I'm not voting for them, I'm voting for you. So no matter what their issues are, I'm more, I, I enjoy talking to lobbyists, because to tell you the truth, it really gives me an opportunity to learn a lot more, to ask questions about somebody who knows something about the issue. But believe me, right after I get done with talking with the one lobbyist, I go to the other side and talk to the other side too.
Well, and as you mentioned, the television thing, I mean, people get such biased information, and now they're having these...
Inaccurate information, too.
These things where they don't even, you know, the, uh, don't even represent what candidate, and, you know?
And that, then that's, that's some campaign finance reform I'd really like to see as well, is that the disclosure requirements of having to say who you really are, and who, you know, that these, these false, you know, PACs, these unknown PACs that are throwing so much money at races, is kind of scary.
Well, in some well-known, I mean, if you're informed on an issue, you find out that some of the stuff you listen to, you know it's a big lie.
I know.
And there isn't even any control to keep them being honest in their stuff.
Lisa, did you have another internet question?
Yes, sir, you said the magic words. I want to keep my UPMC doctor, but I have Highmark. I think they will work out their differences at the last minute, but if they do not, do you support action? And this question comes from Kelly of North Irwin.
That wasn't somebody from UPMC, was it?
Kelly does not say where she works.
Here, here's where I'm at. I, I am a firm believer in letting the free market system work. I really believe in letting the free market system work. Healthcare is a different animal, though. It's very difficult. I want to see UPMC and Highmark come to an agreement where if you have UPMC insurance, you can go to a Highmark hospital. If you're a Highmark insurer, you can go to UPMC hospital. I want to see them work that out on their own without legislative interference. I've told both Highmark and UPMC, you were sitting in the meeting when I told them, I've told them both, I'm not going to interfere until next year. Next year, when it comes time for that contract, I certainly will interfere. If we need to take legislative action, I hope we don't. But if we need to, I, I will. It, it is unfortunate that we, we're about the only place that I'm aware of. I know you work for UPMC, Lisa, don't look. We live in one of the few areas that have an insurer also on the hospital system. That happens everywhere, but we're the only place that has two of them. So there's competition there. But if you're a nonprofit, competition is a word that should not exist. You're a nonprofit, you're there for the public good. You raise money, you take care, you know, competition shouldn't be an issue. It's kind of scary when, you know, and, when we were meeting, we were meeting with UPMC last week, actually, and we met with Highmark as well, we have ongoing dialogues all the time. It's, it's kind of weird where Westmoreland County, everybody just assumes Westmoreland County is an Exela Hospital county. Penn Township, North Huntington, Irwin, they're not. I mean, some go to Exela, some go to UPMC, some go to Forbes, or what is it called now? Forbes, name changes, it's kind of hard keeping up. Yeah, and, and here, they're not in competition, but UPMC builds a hospital a half a mile away. But they're not in competition, no. My feeling is, is this, like I said, I am not going to force legislation. I would hope they can reach an agreement and understand that for the common good of a nonprofit organization, of taking care of the public, that they can reach a happy medium there. I'm hopeful they did it in the past without legislative interference, although we had to threaten it. So I, I will do the same thing in the future. Not going to interfere until next year, but if we're not getting anywhere, certainly we'll look at legislative interference.
Uh, yeah, George, um, our, the budget, the three biggest things on the budget is educate, medicate, and incarcerate. And I think that's probably with any state. And the thing is, I'm thinking about is the, is the incarceration. And I've read something locally, or I don't know if it's local or federal, that they're talking about eliminating prison sentences for very minor drug use. It'll lead to, you know, save money. Maybe they would put ankle bracelets on these people and keep them at home. Anything like that happening?
That's not happening in Pennsylvania. That was, uh, was it California or Oregon?
Yeah.
I can't remember, it was a western state, and I did read that somewhere, where they have prisons that are overcrowded because of mandatory sentencing. Three strikes and you're out, uh, which we have, you know, we have the same federal guidelines here. There's been no, there's been no discussions here in Pennsylvania of reducing sentencing requirements for, for, for low-level drug, drug arrest. That's what it, that's what I read about it, I think that's what you're referring to, low-level drug arrests. I mean, we have a, and, and I don't want to take John's thunder, but we have a drug problem here, everywhere. Don't kid yourself, people, please do not kid yourself that because you live in a nice neighborhood, whether it's North Huntington, or Irwin, or Penn Township, or Jeanette, don't kid yourself that because your kids are in a good school, that these problems don't exist. John and his men are out there every day fighting this battle. Every single day, they're out there fighting it. But you know what? You have to have some threat to hang over people, some deterrent. I mean, he could keep picking up people every day of the week, but if they're coming right back out, you're going to still be fighting. So I would not agree to reducing sentencing for low-level drug convictions. I, I mean, I, I'm pretty firm on that. I will say on our budget, we had a $60 million increase in, in, uh, in our penal budget, corrections budget. I wasn't that happy about that, seeing they closed a prison in Greensburg.
Yeah.
Uh, so if we're having, I don't think Pennsylvania's faced with the same crisis if we're closing prisons in Greensburg, which is a fully functional prison that, that could be used. Uh, so I don't think we have, we're facing that problem right now in Pennsylvania.
One more quick thing on the, on, is that, um, on the money thing for, for police going into the general fund. How many counties, and I know there's a real big one in this county, townships, where there are no police forces, and the state police are being used. And there's these things were coming up, having everybody pay $100 per person in a family to do that. I appreciate, and I have no problems paying my taxes for this police force in this township. I've heard people say, oh, we have too many police in here. Well, God bless them, they do a heck of a good job. And then you look at Hempfield, and it's so huge, and I've talked...
So you said it, now, you said who it was.
I did, so I don't care. I'm moving anyhow, so. But there are, there are, and I've talked to people in Hempfield, I don't want a police force, I'm going to have to pay more money. And then the poor police, you know, the state policemen in Greensburg are going crazy.
Yeah, and we actually, there was legislation proposed this year by Representative Sterling from Lancaster. Now, Mike Sterling is a Democrat policy chair, and he is a very fiery young man. And he is one of those guys, when he gets up to speak on the House floor, everybody goes, oh, because Mike is just tough, and he just keeps pounding. And I mean, it's not that we dislike Mike, it's not, that's not the case at all. But Mike gets up and he offers an amendment on a bill, like you said, that if you do not have a police force of your own, and you're using state police, there should be some type of per capita charge to pay for the, pay for the state police. If you don't want to have police, that's fine, we'll still let the state police do it, but we'll charge a per capita charge. This amendment goes afro, I voted yes. Quickly, I voted yes. Then again, I represent Penn Township, Jeanette, North Huntington, Irwin. Everybody has a police force. It's a very easy vote for me, and it, and it is a right vote, even if I, it would be, it would be weird, because let's say I represented Hempfield too. I mean, I'd be, you know, I'd have a lot of residents angry at me, but it, it's the right vote, to tell you the truth. It's a right vote. And, and that's what makes it very difficult, is to get to that 102, 26, and 1. It's very hard, because especially when you get to the Senate, where there's 50 senators across the state, and all of them have one or two municipalities that don't have a police force that the state police are taking care of, all of them do. So it's a very difficult vote, and I understand it to be a difficult vote for them. I fully support it, I fully support it. I know my predecessor did as well. I, I mean, you know, if you're getting police coverage, you should have to pay for it. We're blessed, we're really blessed. And I'm not saying that because we keep sitting here, but I mean, we're blessed. We have a very good police force here, and we do pay for it. We do pay for it. Why should we pay for it, as well as have our tax callers go to cover state police and other municipalities? Do you have another question, Lisa?
This question comes from Carol of Level Green. I thought legalized gambling was going to lower my taxes. My taxes are not lower. Where did the money go?
Yeah. Yeah, well, legalized gambling, to tell you the truth, has done everything it was promised to do. It has produced all the revenues it promised to produce. It's actually exceeded expectations. Pennsylvania is the second highest state in the Union in collecting taxes from gambling, second. We're a head Atlantic city, New Jersey. We get more money from gambling than New Jersey does. Yeah, we do have a lot more senior citizens. But, oh my goodness, that was a killer fly, did you see that something? Nobody saw, you could cut that out of the video later. I don't know, it may have been the casinos coming after me, I don't know, but...
A drone.
Yeah. We, Pennsylvania's the second highest in revenues from gambling. It's done everything it's promised to do. The problem was, is when that bill was introduced, I don't know what year it was before I was, long before I was there, people were sold a bill of goods, people were told, this is going to get rid of your property taxes, this is going to eliminate your property taxes. Bull. It never had enough money coming in to do that. You do, everybody here who pays property taxes does get a benefit from gambling. It's on your tax bill, your homestead exemption, that's gambling dollars. It's not a big number, not a gigantic, and it certainly doesn't eliminate it, that's for sure. But it's producing everything it could do. It is taxed at the highest rate, the highest rate, and it has the highest tax rate of anybody. We're collecting a lot of money from gambling, but it would, you know, we were sold a bill of goods that this was going to eliminate property taxes, this is going to, you know, reduce our property taxes to next to nothing. That was never going to happen. What had happened, in order to get that bill passed, and I keep going back to 1, 102, 26, and 1, in order to get to 102, they had to buy this guy, this guy, this guy. We needed, this guy wanted money for the, for the farmers, this guy wanted money for horse racing, this guy wanted money for, in order to get their votes, and that's how they got it passed. Originally, it may have been a number big enough to make a difference in your property tax. By the time that bill got passed, it got so watered down, that money got divided up so many different ways, that pie got slid, slid up every which way that those pieces of pie got so small, that it didn't make that big a difference. I feel bad in Westmoreland County, because we don't have a casino. We don't have one. But I tell you, Washington County is pretty darn good, because there's, there's things in that bill that Washington County gets money, you know, just for Washington County, the local impact fee that they get from their casino, they have a lot of nice ballparks down there. They have a lot of nice ballpark, they have a lot of nice little things that they do with that money that we don't have the benefit of. The problem is, we should go back and revisit it. We should go back and reopen that, and look at how that money is divided up, how that pie is sliced up, and reallocate those monies. The problem is, you'll never get the votes. You run the risk of it just getting, just being a bigger mess. Someone else here with a question?
Couple things. First off, I think you should be commended for not taking the per diems.
Thank you.
It's very abused, and thank you for doing that. Another thing I'd like to say, I agree with liquor privatization, and I would like to see the Port Authority cut out of the, have their own separate funding. But for Mike Turzai to make those two tied together, I think that's 100% wrong.
And, and what he said is, the tying the two together, transportation...
Yes.
And liquor was wrong. I agree. I, I often use the analogy in Harrisburg, when we get a bill, any type of bill, people start putting amendments on and different things, and this little easy bill becomes this big mess of all kind of bills tied together. You ever see that commercial, a Comcast commercial, where the guy just moved into the neighborhood and they're talking about buying, you know, whether they should bundle things, and the guy comes to the door and his dog's all bundled up, and they bundle everything around here. That's what Harrisburg's like, they bundle everything together. There's quid pro quo, and although everybody denies there was, there was no quid pro quo on, on liquor and transportation, it was obvious what was happening. We pass liquor, the Senate passed transportation. They sat at one end of the hallway, we sat at the other, and it was like a game of chicken was going on, just staring at each other, like, okay, we're not going to touch transportation until you touch liquor, and back and forth. Who's responsible for that? I mean, I, I can't really say. I just say, let's get things done. Let's just get it done, what's, what's so hard about this? You know, why is one tied to the other? They, they have nothing to do with each other. They're two completely different things. You know what, Senate, take a vote on liquor. If you don't like the bill we sent you, change the darn thing. Vote it and send it over to us, and we'll look at it again. House, take a vote on transportation, although I'll be a no, the way it's written right now. But that's fine, I, I mean, I'll cast my vote and then see what happens. And if we can't get it passed, let's go back and talk about alternatives. What I'm doing right now is I'm working with other legislators to, to find an alternative transportation funding forum, and some type of dedicated funding stream that comes back year after year after year. It isn't a one-shot deal. Some way of funding transportation in a, like I said, eliminate, eliminate Turnpike Commission, sales tax, things like that, moving out the state police. That's my answer to that, and I don't care what the Senate's going to do. I don't, you know, do something. But to have, to have a bill that big and that important, whether it's transportation or liquor, and to do nothing, to not vote on all, is egregious.
One other...
I, I agree with you 100%. I mean, that's, I, I, and then for years, for years, Pennsylvania has flexed funding out of transportation to the Port Authority to bail them out for their problems. If we stop doing things like that, maybe we can deal with this gentleman's problem here with inheritance tax.
The only other thing I could say regarding what you said about the governor, the pension, there, there is a pension, there's a benefit problem, okay? I've worked in private industry my whole life. One time, I had a fully funded pension, I had fully funded healthcare. Now I pay 50% of my healthcare with a $2,500 deductible. It's going to go up in September, another $20 a week. And for us to have to pay for people that work in a job for 25 years to pay for their health insurance for maybe another 40 or 50 years, something's wrong somewhere.
And I, I'm not going to disagree with you, but what I will say is what I said earlier, is, I come from private industry, I've never had a pension in my life, I've lived off a 401K, well, not lived off, but I've put money into a 401K. My retirement is set up, I'm 53 now, wow, that sounds like a big number. I'm 53 now, but I, I have my retirement set aside, I've took, I made those sacrifices out of my pay when I was younger, and that's my money, nobody else paid into it, although I did have matching funds from, from my, my businesses. The problem we have is with current benefits, changing current benefits. If you change anybody's current benefit package, it's an impairment of a contract that you're going to end up in court and never win. Like I said, I think if you want to change current benefits, you have to do it to the contractual process. As contracts expire, negotiated.
That's right, if the contract expires...
That is what I, and that's, that's what I'm standing for, but that, but if somebody, well, first off, let's do it with two things. A retiree, they're set.
They, they've earned that, they've earned that.
They've earned that, exactly. Those currently in the system, their next contract, negotiated in their next contract.
Right, I mean...
But to, but to change it, like the governor's proposal did, which was to change, you know, from this point forward, we're changing it without a contractual thing, I worry we'll end up in court. And then if you're in court, you're getting nothing done, because voter ID is still in court, what else is in court? Everything's in court. And we really need to get things done, not, and not do things to go to court over. So that's, that's been my suggestion all along, but I, I do agree with you. I mean, I've lived my whole life under 401K. If they're handled properly, they're good.
You can do well with them.
Yes. Yes, thank you. Lisa, you have any more questions there, or you have to let me know when you don't, how's that?
Okay, well, I, I'm pretty sure this will be the last one. This one is also of John from Jeanette. It's a little bit of a difficult question. He just wants to know whatever happened to simple bills, ones that fit on one or two pages? And thank you, by the way, for taking my previous question, he says.
Actually, I agree, John, it gets a little bit difficult when you get some of these bills that are 30 or 40 pages long, and you have a committee, you have three committee meetings that day, each with two or three bills in it, and you, you want to read everything you get to beforehand. I'm not an attorney, so the legal, the legalese sometimes buries me, you know, trying to fight through it all. John'd be happy to know every bill I wrote, I don't, I think the longest one was three or four pages. I haven't written too many long ones. But what happens normally is, when you're writing a bill, you're mending some code section of the Pennsylvania code. And some code sections can be very long and voluminous, and you may have to change several parts of the code. So the bill may be 20 or 30 pages long, but you're only changing three or four paragraphs in that 20 pages, because what you're changing may be mentioned throughout the code in different areas. So sometimes the, the length of the bill may, may be intimidating, but really, when you're reading the bill, and when I'm reading the bill, what I'm looking for is the italicized parts that are, that are denoting this has been changed. So it's not too often that you see a bill that's more than four or five pages long. Those are normally the big bills like liquor, transportation, those bills are voluminous. Yeah, a couple more questions here before we're done here. Yes.
Thank you for holding this, and thank you for the telephone.
I like those, those are different. I, I always worry when we, because I did a telephone town hall recently, where we just called into everybody's houses and take questions over the phone. But sometimes people get mad because they think it's a robo-call, but any way I could reach out and hear from people, you know, works.
So I'm, I'm interested in Act 13.
Yes.
Now I know you were a former municipal official.
Yes.
So.
And I voted no on Act 13 because I was a former municipal official. Act 13 is Oil and Gas Act, that the natural Marcellus Act that we passed, was it two years ago? I guess it was, that deals with impact fees. But it also in, in, in the bill.
It dealt with some stuff that has given.
Yes.
Given that industry.
Yes.
An opportunity to ride roughshod over, maybe not this, your district, but some other districts.
My district doesn't have much Marcellus, doesn't have any Marcellus in it. But actually, I voted against the bill because, not because of the impact, well, partially because of the impact fee, but mostly because it took away all local control of zoning. I said earlier, I believe in local control. I believe in local controls for, you know, our police, our education, zoning. I don't think that us in Harrisburg should be dictating to Penn Township, North Huntington, or Jeanette, or Irwin, what they can let go on in their district. I leave that decision up to this man back here, he's the commissioner here. He can make those rules up. I shouldn't be making, shouldn't be making rules that he has to adhere to. I trust him, I trust these gentlemen here to work on this, on this board. I voted no. Guess what? We're in court. We're in court on Act 13, because it says unconstitutional, the, the local ordinance, removing, overriding local ordinances. So that's still in court right now. I understand that it's in front of the Supreme Court, and they lost in, Pennsylvania lost in court as far as the local, local control issue of it. They're talking about appealing it to the Supreme Court again, to have them rehear it.
In front of seven judges.
But I, I'll be honest with you, and what she's referring to is because, speaking of prison, there's a Supreme Court justice in prison right now. We had a, we had a, the governor appointed a new Supreme Court Justice, Coriel Stevens. Now, he just got sworn in, and the rumor is, while they're going back on Act 13 because Justice Stevens now can vote on it, I don't think he can. I don't think he has a right to hear it, to tell you the truth, because he wasn't there on the original arguments. I don't see how he can legally vote on it, to be honest with you, that's my opinion. Again, I'm not a lawyer, but that's my opinion, that, that if they're going to rehear Act 13, that Justice Stevens shouldn't be able to have a vote.
The past couple days, I've been collecting signatures for a petition to Governor Corbett concerning Loyal Sock State Forest, which is in the other part of the state. But we own it, the citizens.
Yes.
And the petition is asking the governor to hold public hearings and to consider not fracking that pristine land, those high-value waterways. And where would you stand on that?
I have no problem with having a public hearing on it. I, I know they've talked about drilling in Loyal Sock, but I don't know, I'll be honest with you, I really don't know all the details. I've gotten emails from concerned citizens on it, that, you know, pass those concerns on. I would welcome having public hearings on it. I, I think everything, to tell you the truth, one of the issues I have had with our present administration is the desire to do things, not behind closed doors, but not out, not out in the open, not with enough transparency. Let's talk about the selling of the lottery, and things like that. I mean, these are things that, I'm not saying I agree or disagree with, but at least let's have a hearing about it, let's talk about it. There is, the way government is set up, we all learned this when we were in grade school. We all learned in grade school, there's three, four, there's three branches of government. Judiciary, executive, and legislative branch. And they all have checks and balances against each other. If the executive branch is solely doing stuff without us, the legislator, or the judiciary, having any oversight, there's a problem. And, and that's, I mean, for, so to have a, having the legislator have a public hearing on it, I'd be in favor of that.
And what is your opinion about the Sunoco pipeline?
We are, can I say about the meeting, Bruce, or is that allowed to be discussed? Okay. Sunoco Logistics, for those that don't know, proposed a pipeline running from Delmont, well, Washington, PA, to Delmont, Houston, Houston to Delmont, essentially. Was what they originally, what I was originally told. And it was part of the Mariner East Pipeline that goes all the way across Pennsylvania. I have always, and ever somebody had gotten a letter from Sunoco saying they were coming on their land, or something like that, it's not that I've defended Sunoco, I've, I've always thought that what we need to have is an open, honest discussion and let people know what their personal property rights are. I had meetings in North Huntington.
Yes.
I had meetings in North Huntington, brought Sunoco, my urgent, Sunoco came in to talk to all the residents of North Huntington about this proposed pipeline. Because they proposed to run it, you know, they, they get an aerial photo, they look, and shortest way between two points is a straight line, and the straight line was underneath some power lines, and those power lines, they said, okay, we're going to run this line right here. And that power line happened to go right behind Markview Manor, which is the most densely populated area of North Huntington. I didn't agree with that, we met with Sunoco, we had all the residents there. I wasn't advocating for one side or the other, I just was wanting free flow of information. After all, the residents met with Sunoco, Sunoco decided to take an alternative route. Now they're coming through, well, heck, my backyard. Essentially, really, because that line is, oh, it's a good par five away from my house. You know, right up going through, across the street from Bushy Run, and up through, up across 130 there, very close to my house, right back behind the dam on, on, on Berlin Road. So Sunoco's moving forward. They have been working with me in the past, but recently, they haven't had very open and honest discussion with me. We've had trouble getting information from them. So what we're proposing to do is, and Bruce Light, the manager in the township, told me recently, we're going to try and have a meeting here in Penn Township with Sunoco Logistics, Equitable Gas, other companies, and let residents come in and ask all the questions they need to ask. I, I mean, I do not believe.
I think it's very timely, because it was recently reported that they are making use of sort of a loophole, a strange quirk of their geography, of their pipe, the Mariner Pipeline.
That's what I've heard as well.
To use eminent domain.
Yes, I'm very familiar.
To get people's properties who are, are not willing to.
Essentially, what they did, and I haven't had a chance to actually see a map and know everything in detail, is the Mariner East Pipeline, when it goes to the easternmost part of the state, is sticking into Delaware, not by a whole heck of a lot, but sticking into Delaware, which just opened up interstate commerce roles and made things a little bit easier as far as Sunoco is concerned. So I do want to have discussions with them about that, and, and the use of eminent domain that, that enabled them to do it. Irregardless, what I've said, and what I've always said, and I always will say is, I certainly support business, I certainly support the energy sector, but personal property rights trump all. Personal property rights always trump all. Any more questions from you, Lisa? All right, are there, we have time for one more question, anybody have another question? No more questions? Okay, I want to, want to thank everybody for coming, I really do appreciate this. We have other town halls scheduled, if anybody's interested. We're having one of these in North Huntington in December. So if you want to come over to North Huntington and do it again there, that's fine. If not, you can sit at home on your computer and throw questions at me, that's fine as well. Irregardless of whether you're here, had questions or not, always feel free to stop by my office. My office in Penn Township is right over here at the Pine Center. You can always tell if I'm there, because there'll be the black car sitting along the side of the building, that's how everybody knows to stop when I'm there, as you see my, you see my car, which is my car, not a state car, everybody know that. It's my car, not a state car. If you see my car there, always feel free to stop in and say hi. Even if you don't see my car there and you have a question, feel free, these, these young men and women will be there, they'll be glad to take any questions and give them to me as well. If there's something you need to talk to me about, you could always email me as well. Lisa will give out cards, you have my cards, if you need my email address, or you can reach me through the website as well. Again, thank you so much for being here. It's really important to me that I hear from what everybody has to say, and what your opinions are on, on all the issues, and especially important, because being here in Penn Township is always a soft spot in my heart, and being in this room means a lot to me, so thank you guys for all coming here and sharing the evening with me. Go Buckos, yes.
Do you want to do a show of hands on the Delmont?
Yeah, certainly, I would love to do that. First off, marriage, we're going to do a quick show of hands on Delmont, the Defense of Marriage Act. Do you believe marriage is solely between a man and a woman? Okay, what about same-sex couples having the same rights as a married couple, but not through marriage, through, not through marriage, but, but civil unions? Okay, you didn't raise your hand on either. You're saying, you're saying, the third question is, the third question is.
I'm going with Bruce Vader Ginsberg, in her opinion, I forget what, I wish I could remember. I, I think that they deserve the full civil rights of everyone else, that civil unions are the skim milk version.
I appreciate that.
Give them the whole milk.
I appreciate that. Yes, but again, thanks y'all for coming, I appreciate y'all being here.